Good morning, folks. Appreciate everyone being here for the meeting today. I'd like to convene the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, June 18th, at 2013 at 10:00 a.m. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. And please turn for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment on any of the agenda items today?
Before we do that, I'd like to just make a motion to amend the agenda to add an item. At Tuesday's agenda meeting, last week's agenda meeting, one of the items on the agenda was to allocate funds from the Marcella Shell impact fees for Fayette County's farmland preservation program. I made the motion to place it on the agenda for today. It died for lack of second, and the reason stated is that you weren't prepared to discuss it. The problem was that when the agenda item was submitted to the chief clerk by me, I left out the word "legacy fund," so I want to bring it to the attention if now, if the commissioners are ready to consider this, then that's why I would like to have it on the agenda. If you don't place it on the agenda for today, then I'll make the motion or I'll place it on the agenda for next month's meeting. But for clarification purposes and reconsideration, it was to, and I'm asking to place it on the agenda today, to allocate funds from the Marcella Shell impact fee legacy fund for Fayette County's farmland preservation program.
What I would like to do is I would like to put it on next month's meeting because we have another meeting with the Farm Bureau to discuss in more detail the needs and the some of the synergies we can achieve with the money. I hate making decisions without knowing those facts.
What do you want to speak on, sir? On this item?
The item and information about farmland preservation.
The item hasn't been amended, so it wouldn't be up for public comment.
Right, so if it was on the agenda, if I got a second to place it on the agenda, then you could. So you'll have to bring it up later on at the very end of the meeting under public comment, okay?
So is there a second?
I would like to again discuss this with the Farm Bureau as well as other agricultural associated organizations. I think it's a worthy investment in our county. It definitely needs more detail. This fund is a limited fund, and of course, we've already dispersed some monies, at least via a motion, so I would definitely look and consider allocating some portion. But again, these funds are limited unless we want to pull back some of the other appropriations or marks. So I would like to review this talk to Mr. Becker and some of the other organizations as well. I think it's appropriate and important that we do that, sir.
Yeah, and that's where the confusion is, okay, for what he just said. First off, we did, you, the farmland preservation board members, at least two of you met with both commissioners, right? And then you met with me separately. So we have talked about it, and if you have additional information, that's fine. I don't know how much more additional you could give us, but you did speak with them and you spoke with me, right?
Correct.
Okay, because you asked for a meeting last commissioners' meeting, okay. The second thing is, and this is where we did not allocate any monies, and that's what I'm referring to. This is out of the legacy fund, and just to give it information before so you can consider it's an item that has not been allocated. The monies that were allocated by resolution were out of the Act 13 impact fees. That was the 2011 distribution and the 2012 distribution of 1.4 and 1.2. I'm referring to a fund that has not yet been touched, and that is, we have roughly 115, no, I'll tell you real quick.
150?
Last year, for the 2011 legacy fund, 115,896.63, we have not allocated a dime out of there. And also, for the 2012 disbursement legacy fund, there is one, we're going to be getting this money at the end of this month, 113,967.
212.
So, right, and that legacy fund is, those monies don't get reported to the PUC. Those monies are, can be designated according to the agricultural, Mr. Wolfgang, I think his name is, for farmland preservation. So I wanted to just make it clear, because at Tuesday's agenda meeting, the agenda items said impact fee. This here is out of the legacy fund, which those, we have 200-some-odd thousand dollars that could be, not all of it, some of it could be allocated to the farmland preservation.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak for a second?
Sure. Okay. Well, first let me, my name is Harold Becker. I'm the chairman of the Agricultural Land Preservation Board in Fayette County and also the treasurer of the Fayette County Farm Board. I want to thank all three of you for taking the previous time that you've allotted us to talk about this important subject of preserving farms. I'm optimistic that as we go forward, you have said that you would want to have further meetings. I'm amenable to that, as long as we don't disperse the funds before the meeting. That's the main thing. And you know the importance of this. The money came from farms, and we wanted to go back to help us preserve farms. So I'm open for further discussion whenever it's available, and I thank you for your pass time.
Mr. Becker, thank you so much.
You were very informational that day, and I still want to follow up on that, that agratorism. I think that's a key component to a lot of things that we need to look at regarding the economic stimulators of agriculture community.
Well, I didn't want to belabor you with that again, but you know, we need to get into that. Thank you.
Okay. The motion dies for lack of second. We will put this on the July agenda.
We have to do that next month.
Okay. Any other public comments on the, any agenda items?
I would like to comment on your agenda item number seven before you read your commissioners' votes and our taxpayers' all under the press. Do you want to do that now?
Five minutes, please.
Now?
Yes, now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris, try to keep it to five minutes, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Terry Chris, and I reside in Dunbar Township. Before I comment, I just want to clarify that the need to build a new prison is because of overcrowding, a lack of beds, and our county paying to house these criminals and adjacent county lockups. After reading all the stories in the Herald Standard and Tribune Review, I saw no other alternatives suggested by you three county commissioners or your prison working group other than to build a new prison. I would like to offer two alternatives if I may. The first is to let a private company come in and build a new prison and maintain it. My second alternative would suit the needs of everyone. It would be far cheaper and could be put into operation tomorrow. Just in the past several weeks, the State Corruption Institute of Greensburg began transferring prisons and shutting down operations. This state-owned turnkey facility sits on 81 acres off of U.S. Route 119 in Youngwood and has over 100,000 square feet of building space with an 860-bed capacity. This alternative would be a win-win for everybody, especially the hard-working taxpayers of this county, who you expect to shoulder the cost of paying for a prison for the next 30 years. Most of us in this room will be dead before the debt on the new prison will be paid off. $50 million is a lot of money to spend on something that will never come back to benefit the average citizen or enhance our county. To the average working taxpayer, there is a big difference between want and need. We all want things, but our budgets only let us buy what we need. If overcrowding and a lack of beds is a real need, then the SCI Greensburg is your answer. I am sure the state does not want the burden of a shuttered facility and would be more than eager to help you make this happen. If you can have Senator Kasunik write to the governor about appointing two new judges before the election, then surely you can solicit your fellow Democratic leaders, Kasunik, Kula, Mahoney, Daley, and Snyder, to help you make this more cost-friendly alternative happen. In this uncertain economy, the timing is wrong to be spending $50 million on a new prison. This county's workforce cannot afford to pay for this. Please remember, just in the past 18 months, you county commissioners have already added to our debt, $8 million for a Motorola radio system, $500,000 for a new water county system, and a 3% raise to more than 500 county employees, just how much more you think the working class in this county can afford to pay. I urge you to seriously consider this sound and viable alternative. Not only will this suit the needs of the overcrowding, but you also have hundreds of extra beds so you can be paid to house out of county prisoners. Lastly, the papers mentioned the two sites were selected for your new prison. So before you take a vote to spend monies on studies and core samples, go along with others wanting to know where the two sites are located. I thank you all for your time and consideration, and I'd like to hear the answer on the two selected sites.
Thank you for your comments. We'll get to those answers after everybody's had a chance to make their vote.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Any other comments?
No, you go. Good morning, everyone. My name is Gary Bronfield. I'm the current Fayette County sheriff and chairman of the Fayette County Prison Board and have been for the past 14 and a half years. I just wanted to give credit to the board that's been studying for the new prison facility. I've seen things in the past, there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on programs. We've been told that our population would double by 2010. It's more than tripled. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to other counties to house our prisoners. In fact, I've had calls from other counties wanting to know how many prisoners we could be sending them. There's a cost factor for transportation and so forth. I just wanted to congratulate whoever's responsible, the commissioners and the prison force studies, to finally take some type of action. This prison is a dungeon. I hear complaints every day from the CEOs. It's not a good working condition. It's not a good condition. It's totally obsolete, whether it be in a state institution that has been shut down because it's in much need of repairs, I believe, and the state can't afford to repair that. That's why I believe they're shutting down Greensburg. But also, if the facility is built and built properly, I feel that we can house other county prisoners and also federal prisoners, the feds are paying $100 a day to house their prisoners, and that would more than make up for the difference.
Did you say Greensburg is shutting down because of the facility?
I'm not sure on that. I believe that's the reason. I mean, they had to have a good reason to shut down a facility such as that, which means transportation, I move all the prisoners from Fayette County. So far, we've moved 14,000 prisoners, one and a half million miles. But I'd also like to see the board to study in the building of the prison to keep in mind, to keep the current facility, some cells there so that I can bring the prisoners back a week before work week instead of trying to get everybody back in one day because they're entitled to opt-in or return it. But the prison system is totally obsolete. Even to bring a vanload of prisoners in there, you have to take them outside. There's no solid port. There's no security whatsoever. So I've got two deputies with 10 prisoners, all of which are state-risk. I've seen people, elderly people, in there to visit people that are incarcerated. They're standing there in the rain and snow, just thinking they're being punished for something they've never done. But once again, I just want to say thank you and hope you move forward.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other comments on this, on the agenda items? Yes, Ms. Savannah.
Anyone need to go?
Yes, please.
My comments are basically directed towards money. That's my major concern right now. Our current budget for the county is around $29 million a year. We're about to go into debt for double that, okay? If somebody tells you, because I've been there, that you're only going to have to pay 40 million, that's usually the bare bones thing. By the time you add everything else on and the interest rates go up and somebody made a mistake on the plan, and so you have to add this, before you're over, you've doubled it. So whatever they're telling you, you may as well just double it. At $29 million budget yearly, if you went out and bought a house, when I bought my house, they told me I needed twice the amount in my salary of the cost of the house. And that was a long time ago, and we cared for our money. And now, we just spend it freely. And I'm asking myself, how can you build a prison and borrow 30 or 40 million knowing it's going to go up to 60 or 80 million when your salary is 29 million? And that's with an increase already, before we even talked about increases. I don't think we can afford it. I understand the sheriff's concern. We all have that concern. But who's going to pay for this? 30 years from now, somebody is going to be standing here saying, "We can't afford this prison because it's not going to be paid for." And I know what happens here, too. It's, "Oh, we're going to get rich on the impact fee and then we'll call in taxes and come from back." We're not. The impact fee has already been reduced by a couple of hundred thousand dollars. We can expect, the gas industry is a lot like the coal industry in that it will go up and it will go down. It's a constant up and down, and those of us who have lived long enough can remember what happened. We would have boom and we would have bust. And I was a kid at that time. I remember what happened. My dad would be working 20 hours a day practically, and then all of a sudden, my dad was home, and we were living off the money he made prior. And if we didn't have any money he made prior, then we really had a big garden that year and hoped we would survive. Now, today, it's a whole different thing, but the money is still the problem. You have to have enough to do it. Now, if you want to put a fund aside and start saving the money that you would use to defray the costs, because I don't know what a new site's going to cost. It could cost a fortune unless you use county land, but even then, if you do that, you may be using it for non-taxable purposes. The other part of that is, I'm not sure we need it. From what I can see, the increase that you have is coming from the 7,000 unserved bench wars that are now being served. And so you have this influx of people coming in who don't need full-time incarceration. What they need is something to get them to pay their darn fees. That's what we need. And the ones who have a drinking problem don't need to go to prison. They need to go to rehab. And those who have a drug problem don't need to go to prison. They need to go to rehab. And to me, I would rather spend my money that way than building a brand-new spanking-new prison that's going to cost God knows what when we're finished, by the time you furnish it and put up all the little cootermans that you have to do when you do these things. State law requires this. You've got to have ramps there. You've got to do certain toilet seats. I mean, it's amazing. And to me, I don't think this is a good expenditure of money, but more than that, to this point, I don't think any of us have sufficient information. Here we sit. We've had a board meeting for, I don't know, a year. I don't even know who all the board members were. I see it in the paper, and then they'll say, "And citizens." And I'm thinking, okay, who are the citizens? Are the citizens just your average Joe who's going to come out and say, "Hey, I don't think I can afford that?" Or are these people committed people who want this done? And believe me, a 129-year-old prison does need some help, okay? On the other hand, I say to myself, someone's in prison, and I'm not worried about whether or not they're comfortable, okay? Only that they're safe and fed. That's about it. I'm not going to worry about that. I don't think most citizens can worry about that. So I am suggesting I would love to see some other options before we make any kind of distribution of money on a plan that nobody's seen. So if you want this, then give us your plan. Have some public meetings. Let us come and talk to you. Let us come in and ask you questions. I had preferred that you would have had somebody on that committee who wasn't involved in the law or the judiciary. They have a slanted opinion. We all know that, and I would, too, if I were in their position. But there are other views that haven't even been considered. For example, one person said to me, "Well, if we have a crowd there, why don't we just move out on the Army Reserve place out there? It's sitting there growing weeds. There are two nice brick buildings there. Nothing around it but a cemetery and some trees. What's wrong with using that as a temporary prison? Talk to the Army. Maybe they'll sell it to us cheap. They don't like to keep stuff around either." That could be your day prison or your few-day prison.
The Army doesn't have any more. Send to the general services.
Then go to general services.
We've talked with them.
Good. I'm glad to hear that, but I think those are the kinds of options that we need to have. Once we have three or four options and the budgets that will go with them, and we know how much money we can expect, then we can never say, "Everybody told me how much money we're going to make on this natural gas. Everybody was going to be working overtime."
Ms. Savannah, I appreciate if you could wrap it up.
I know. I'm going to wrap it up right this minute. I'm simply saying to you, we're not ready to make this decision, and you need, and I need, more information. And so I recommend that we all tell them openly and clearly how we feel about this. They haven't heard you. They've heard themselves. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Number seven again. It says here, "A resolution," right? We're going to consider adopting a resolution? Has this resolution been made available to the public to view before it's being voted on?
That's it. That's the motion.
That's it? That's all you're, that's it? Because it's authorizing?
Resolution, yeah.
With no information as to what, where, what?
There is no information to make, there's been no, that's a part of this process, is this resolution will allow for the next step and the next step and the next step, which will all have to be approved as well. This doesn't construct a prison. This just authorizes us to spend funds in which revenues, take the steps for study, core samples, and that sort of thing. We're not going to concrete anytime soon.
But sites are selected?
I don't have any sites. I haven't voted on a site yet.
What, you're voting to spend money to do samples of ground? You don't say there's no site selected?
Well, there could be samples floral. There could be several.
So Mark does two sites selected?
I haven't.
We've looked at 14 sites now. Well, how many are there? At this point? There may be more. How many, how many at this time are you going to be going, spending money to study at this time? Well, we're not going to spend any money until we, until we actually determine a site is viable. We're looking at a lot of sites. We have been for some time now. It's an ongoing process. I would expect us to even come up with even additional sites before we select.
And then we always have the ability to go back to the two previous studies that were conducted by the county where there were selections of the existing facility. There's a plethora of information that the county had spent large amounts of money on previously that basically recommended and basically prophesized the fact that this population would be this high during this particular calendar year. So this isn't old. We're going to learn from the mistakes of others or the good decisions that others had made in the previous studies. We have a lot to work with. Because this isn't, this isn't a new issue, as you're well aware.
Well, I, when I first heard about this issue, it was the first time I met Mr. Ambrosini. He was nominated for commissioner in the Democrat primary, but he was not elected yet. I first met him at a business not far from here. He got off the phone with the district attorney at the time, and he wasn't even elected yet. He said, "Brother, just go off the phone with the district attorney, Jack Hennings, and we've got to build a new prison here in Fayette County." Those were the first words I heard. That is not correct. That is correct. Those are, I have witnesses that were there. That's correct. You've been, this has been your baby before you even took the oath of office, before you even were sworn in, you've been talking about building this prison. So I don't know if this study group is just a sham to further the means where I'm at. Mr. Cavill, I'm going to sit here and debate this issue. If you have to make them, please. I know it's not debatable. It's a fact. I think if you're adopting some kind of a resolution, it can't just be a one-line thing. There should be, it should be made available. You should probably not do this if the public hasn't had a chance to see this. You might want to ask your solicitor if this is, is this being done correctly? Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke, Mr. Cavill, you've been permitted to stand up and make some comments. You have five minutes. I asked some questions, you guys chimed in, and then I'm replying to the, my minutes here.
No, I was just referring to the fact that we've had previous studies to refer to to help us with this process.
I don't have a problem with you replying, as long as I can get the chance to reply back.
Well, I mean, you're asking, I don't know. I'm just giving you my.
This is not a debate. You have, you have a chance to make comments, and please take your seat. I believe that this is a predetermined thing with you. I know you'd have said it the first time I met you, because when I first met you, you figured out who I was, and you said something about my brother when he was a commissioner being a play, a pain-to-play commissioner, and it's been obvious since that time. And you're reminding that you. I'm discussing the agenda item. If you're. I'm discussing the agenda item because you were the first one to bring it to my attention before you even were a commissioner.
Again, Mr. Cavill, on all due respect, discussing the issue is fine. Discussing issues of our guy in previous administrations, the commissioners' comments, whatever. The fact remains is, this is an important issue that we need to address. You're absolutely correct about that. This step here only allows us to take the next step. And then make determination on feasibility, location, there's a number of variables that come into play. The thing that we can't ignore is the problem, and that's what's been, that's what happened. That's what's got us to 348, got us to $900,000 or $800,000, whatever the cost is, about a county rentals. That's what we can't afford to ignore anymore. We have to do something, or the state's quite frankly going to come down and shut the thing down eventually, and then you're going to have costs that are going to escalate because we're going to build it the way the state wants us to build it, not the way we need to build it in a cost-effective manner that fits our current population and the projections of populations in future years. You know this as well, and we could demagogue this and blitzs us, that's all we want. The fact of the matter is, and that's fine, that's part of the game. I understand that. But the reality is, is we can't ignore this problem. If we do, we're going to subject not only our county, but a lot of innocent other people to situations that may occur there that we may not have a second chance on.
Okay, and I don't consider this a game at any point. I'm talking about a sizable amount of money we're spending here. But with regards to that, all options should be considered. What about adding on to the existing prison, upgrading the existing prison at a much less cost rather than going and selecting a site? I mean, if you go out, if you select a site that's 20 miles away, then you have to consider all the other additional costs of transportation and bringing people back and forth.
And they're being, they're being looked at. They're going to be looked at even more thoroughly.
The public's just not up to, there's not enough information out here. You're voting to expend funds, then what's going on?
We're voting to expend funds to take the next step. We're not voting to yield anything more this time.
I don't have anything further. Any other prison issue comments?
Just one. I don't even want to spend this money until I see something else. You don't need money to plan. You can plan.
Okay. Appreciate that. Let me, let me just say, first, I think that any reasonable person understands, first of all, that our 124-year-old prison is not, first of all, it's undersized. We cannot house the number of inmates that we have for the county. Last month, we housed 90 inmates, 90, outside of the county because we don't have room there. Now, that's a pretty substantial cost. In fact, and I'll repeat this, last, last month, we had 68 inmates in Green County. Green County had 62 inmates there, so we actually had more inmates in Green County than they did. Now, Green County, I assure you, the commissioners in Green County are more than happy to house our inmates, and why is that? Well, we're paying their mortgage payment. Now, there's a whole bunch of reasons, and the overcrowding is, is just one reason, but it's not the important one. The important reason that, you know, we need a new facility is not, you know, it's not even because, you know, our prison is old, you know, obviously, it can't even meet building code. You know, when that prison was built, it wasn't even electrified. You know, they had gas lamps. That tells you it's a little bit old. There's doorways that are made of stone that are three feet thick that don't meet ADA requirements. It would be cost-prohibitive to try to renovate that prison to meet current building standards. There's additional reasons why we can't expand that facility because it doesn't meet, we can't even use the current prison methods of supervision. can't, we can't even use the current prison methods of supervision, which is the direct supervisory method, it's, it's just impossible to do that, the current prison is not safe, not only for the inmates, it's not safe for the corrections officers. We have to, we have to, this is a tough choice, there's no question, but I, but what we're doing by establishing this prison working group last November, and we've, we've invited the press to be at every one of the meetings, and, and, and so, and to best of my knowledge, after every meeting, there was a story in the, in the, in the newspapers as to what was, you know, the things that were conducted in that meeting. But the most important thing in this, and I want people to understand this, the most important reason we're, we need a new facility is to help people. We cannot provide the programming in our existing facility to help people, whether it's, whether it's drug and alcohol abuse, whether it's behavioral health, you know, 25% of our inmates have behavioral health problems. We don't have adequate classrooms, we don't have adequate, well, we don't have any classrooms in our existing facility, we don't, we don't even have, you know, suitable counseling rooms. In fact, in our existing facility, we're using closet space for office space. I mean, I, I could go on and on, but we've established a prison working group made up of a wide range of individuals. We, we have four, four teams, the criminal justice team, the architectural team, the finance team, and the programming team. Now, the programming team is, in my estimation, is probably the most important, because those are the people that are coming up with the state-of-the-art programs to help people, you know, whether it's, again, the, the things I mentioned, including, you know, some, some abilities to help people with their, you know, just to do simple things, teach people how to do some life skills. I mean, there's people in our, in our prison, I can't even write a chat. We have to help individuals with, you know, obtain a GED in some cases. If we don't help people that's in our current facility, we're doing nothing more than warehousing. And those people will come out on the street with no options, with absolutely zero options, they'll do the same things over and over again, and be right back. Over 50% of our population is between ages 18 and 26, and, and, and the majority of those people have been in, back in that prison two and three times. So, and if we don't help these people understand why they're there, why they're, what mistakes they've made, what bad choices they've made in their lives, and then give them some options as to, you know, we're working on some programming with a work release program where inmates can actually learn a job skill, and then go to work for that facility after they get out of, out of jail. There's a lot of things that we can do, but we can't do it in our current facility. Now, now, the, the, the four teams that I mentioned have been working diligently since, since last November. They've come up with a lot of information, you know, we've even taken tours with other You know, first of all, I, I have to make one comment, and, and it goes really to this, to this resolution, you know, in any project, no matter what it is, you know, you can't, you just don't go out and, but first of all, to, just to answer this question, that the cost of this prison will probably most likely be in a neighborhood of $30 million. And I appreciate the, the 15, the double and triple comments, but, but those are uninformed comments. The, the reason for this resolution is simply an accounting holding place to put some of the preliminary work that may require some funding expenditures. You, you don't go out and borrow, or issue a bond for $30 million now, you know, that's going to happen sometime, sometime down the road, but there is expenditures, minor expenditures that you might need to, to do now. And what this allows, it allows those expenditures to be rolled over into the bond issue, you know, maybe a year from now, or whenever that may happen. And, and so, that, wherever we borrow the money from now, it gets reimbursed through the bond issue. That's all this is. I think, in, in terms of the site locations, again, we've, we've looked at probably 14 sites, there, you know, since we started, new sites pop up all the time, so we'll probably continue to look at some additional sites. It's just part of the process. This is, this is, and, and, and we don't have a whiteboard here, but I'd get up and draw some diagrams for you. The fact of the matter is, when you plan a project, the better, the more money you spend in planning reduces the cost of, of overruns, and it unknowns when you actually construct a project. So, so the more planning you do, the less construction cost. That's, that's just a, a standard program management procedure. The, the, unfortunately, right now, the cost of our rentals outside the county are going up. If the trend continues, and we suspect it is, you know, we have 90, which is a record at least, this month, we have, you know, our, our current president judge has made the, you know, has already said that he wants to go out and, and, you know, get people on outstanding warrants, that's going to add to the, to the, to the cost, to the situation, which is fine, I mean, you know, we want to get people off the streets that don't belong there, but we also need to help these people. So, keep in mind, the people in our county jail are only there for a maximum of 23 and a half months. Anything more than that, they go to a state or a federal facility. So our opportunity to help these people with these lesser crimes is paramount. We need, we can't, we can't ignore that, we have to stop warehousing people. And we have the technology, we have the ability to do that, and, and what that does, in case somebody doesn't understand the benefits of this, it, it makes productive citizens out of people, where they can, I, I don't know of anybody that really doesn't want to be able to provide for themselves and their families. And, and we can provide them opportunities and options to do this. So, you know, we, we obviously need to be working in this direction. In addition, the, it, it takes people off the streets for, you know, breaking into your house and stealing your TV set, or, or other, other crimes, you know, it gets people off of drugs, and those are the things we, we need to focus on here. Let's keep our eyes on a ball, the, the building of a facility to help these people in is, is purely secondary to the railway shoots here.
One comment. I paid school taxes for the last 40 years to educate these people. They've had 12 years' class. We have been unsuccessful apparently in those 12 years. What makes you think you're going to turn it around in 24 months? I don't think you can, I don't think there's anything that you or the prison can do. This is a society problem, it has to be dealt with by the society, that's my comment.
Unfortunately, you know, doing nothing is not an option, you know...
But building a building is not the answer, that's the problem. That's my comment. I mean, you can take it for what it's worth, I know it's not what you wanted to hear.
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying either you don't hear, or you don't want to hear it, because...
No, I'm, I'm ill-informed, I'm uninformed, except that I spent 40 years working with people, you spent 40 years working with things, and I'm going to tell you, working with things is not going to solve the problem.
Well, then you're, you're obviously also misinformed of, of what I did during my career.
Well, that's it.
Now, the, the, the things that are looming out there, now, I could tell, I can assure you that the department, the, the Pennsylvania State Department of Corrections is watching, watching us very closely. The feedback that I'm getting from them is they, they like what we're doing, they like this team approach to solving this problem, and, and, but I can assure you, our, our prison reports from the Department of Corrections are, are, are less than stellar, and if, if we get to a point where the Department of Corrections walks in, padlocks are, are gel, and we have to send everybody out, the costs are going to be staggering. So, you know, it, it's better to control your own destiny than to have somebody else come in and tell you what to do. And we're doing that in a very systematic, project management-controlled situation. And, and we've had, again, the people that are on, on this prison working group are across the board, from, from private individuals, to county employees, to faith-based organizations. I mean, we have a wide range of very knowledgeable and skillful people, and they're volunteering their time to, to support what we really need to do to, to help these, help people in this county. I cannot emphasize that enough, we probably have in excess of 3,000, since last November, we probably have in excess of 3,000 hours that's been expended on this, this team effort, and from, from the volunteers and county employees alike, you know, nobody gets any extra compensation for this, they, they do it in addition to their jobs, or, or whatever. So, with that, if there's any other comments, otherwise, we will move on. Okay, we have, are there any other comments on the, any other agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the proclamations. We have a certificate of recognition to the Fayette County Law Library Art Program. I'll read this to you, and then... This certificate of recognition is for the Fayette County Law Library showcasing art in the Law Library, June 18th, 2013. Whereas, the Fayette County Law Library launched an art program which showcases the talents and local artists, which have also grown statewide and internationally. And whereas, the art program has been successful, and was recently recognized in the AALL Spectrum Magazine, and was a feature program on Fayette Today Show. And whereas, over 5,700 people visited the Law Library in 2012, and all said they enjoyed the art program. Whereas, it is fitting and proper for the citizens of Fayette County to recognize and applaud the achievement of Barry Blaney, Law Librarian, and Barbara Pasqual, Assistant Law Librarian, and Director of the Art Program for launching this art program. Now, therefore, we, the Fayette County Commissioners, do hereby recognize them and the Fayette County Law Library, and call upon the citizens to visit the Law Library and to seek, see the artworks, and sign by commissioners. Thank you for all your hard work, thank you for all your efforts and hard work. And if you would like to say a few words, and...
Oh, thank you. My article was published and got the National of Recognition, and it is, the art program in the Law Library is open to the public, on, we are located on the second floor of the courthouse, and every month, we have a new artist, and I'm booking currently, right now, August of 2017, so that's how many artists that we have in the county. And I'd like to thank all the commissioners and the judges who made the program possible, and I want to thank all of my artists who made it a success. Thank you.
I want to make, mention some of my observations of the artist program. Every month, I look forward to meeting the artists, viewing their artworks, and noticing the people that come into the Law Library to view and to enjoy the artworks. And some of these people may have never, may have had any reason to come to the Law Library, but the artist program brings them into the Law Library and the courthouse.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, item five, under Behavioral Health Administration, consider approving the following agreements and modifications.
Make a motion that we approve the agreements and modifications, is listed on the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
If I may, I'd also like to make a motion that we approve item four, the certificate of recognition to the Fayette County Law Library.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider approval to advertise for bids for the leasing of two 2014 Ford Fusions, or 2014 Chevy Malibu sedans, or equivalent models for the Fayette County Behavioral Health Administration to replace vehicles that are nearing lease end. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval under, under Children and Youth Services, consider approval of the 2012-13 Purchase of Service Agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Amanda Como Esquire, rates at $65 an hour.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of the 2012-2013 Purchase of Service Agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Fayette County Juvenile Probation and Crossroads Group Homes and Services Incorporated.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of a 2013-14 Purchase of Service Agreement between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services, Fayette County Juvenile Probation and Cross, Crossroads Group Homes and Services for the listed items.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, under the Controller of the Financial Condition of the County, Mr. Controller Lala?
Commissioners, for your approval dated this 18th of June 2013, in cash in our United Bank checking account, we have $10,86,987.25. Funds that are owed to the General Fund are $1,440,000, as listed on the sheet. Art payments due to the fund, as listed, $234,171.17. Central service payments, as listed on the agenda... Central service payments, as listed on the agenda, $78,686. Funds that the General Fund owes, tax anticipation note, $5 million. Budget year net position, $6,839,844.42. Total 2013 revenues, $19,468,244.24. Total 2013 expenditures, $11,807,903.78. Total 2012 expenditures, which are being paid in '13, is $3,287,640.10. In our capital reserve fund balance, we have $33,583.62. Our bond fund balance is $209,011.20.
Mr. Riley, real quickly, we have got some, some good news regarding, I mean, rates of reimbursement, the speed. Would you like to elaborate on the, we did receive, were we receiving the monies due to CYS, correct?
We did. Commissioner Ambrosini and I and Vince went to Harrisburg, Vince, let's be at the telephone.
Oh, yeah, I was on the phone.
And we negotiated with the CYS Director and the Governor's Advocate, and they agreed to refund the 2010-2011 underpayment of the county in the amount of 1.15 million.
That was the overmatch, correct?
That was the overmatch. That's the money that they have been holding from us for approximately three years now. So, that was a very welcomed addition to our fund.
I, I agree. In addition, I just want to point out, Sean and I went to Harrisburg. Commissioner Zapotowski and Gina Dioria could not attend because of work-related items here in the county, but they did attend via conference call in that meeting. And, you know, the, the, the reason we made the effort to go there is because we had received some information that, that we may not, in fact, probably would not receive that reimbursement. And that was money that was borrowed out of the General Fund to pay Children and Youth Services, provide their services for the kids of the county. So, that was critical. That was an effort to certainly not only protect CYS, but protect the taxpayers of this county. And I applaud everybody's participation in that.
And Representative Mahoney, who's the one who coordinated everything, so I want to express our gratitude.
Yeah, he, he was able to, you know, get the right people in the right place for us to meet with, so that was a, certainly a big, a big supporting effort. So, we appreciate Representative Mahoney's efforts also.
Also, Commissioners, consider for your approval the adoption of a resolution to utilize 2013 county revenue for site surveys, permit issues, and any incurred bond insurance or other costs for the possible construction of a new county prison.
Make the motion to consider adoption of a resolution to utilize 2013 county revenue for site surveys, permit issues, and any incurred bond issuance or other costs for the possible construction of a new county prison.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, District Attorney. Consider ratification of a subscription agreement between Advent Financial Systems LLC of Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, and the Fayette, and Fayette County to manage insufficient funds, funds checks issued to retail merchants and other check payees. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, Emergency Management Agency. Consider approval of the 2012 Fayette County Hazardous Materials Emergency Response. Prepare this assessment as per State Act 165.
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of renewal of the service agreement with Staley Communications for the following equipment: two Alcatel Microwave Shots and two Alcatel Microwave Half-Shots at the cost of $2660 per month. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I was talking to Roy, the guy, the other day. The 911 Motorola project is, is progressing at a rate of time frame. Again, this was done because if we wouldn't have done it, our 911 system would have ceased to exist in a few years because the current system does not have replaceable parts. Thus, there was not a need, but a requirement to do that, or we would not have a 911 system.
In addition, we are partnering with the other counties in, in Region 13 to, to share some of the equipment, which, which allows us to, to keep the cost lower. So, it's a, again, a partnering-type program, cooperation helps us not only have a state-of-the-art system, which protects people, but also protects our taxpayers as well. Human Resource Department, under the bridge, consider approving the temporary hire of Colin Boyle as Bridge Worker One at 1140 per hour effective June 19th, 2013.
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Motion carries. Consider approving the hire of Bruce Klink as a mechanic welder at SEIU Pay Grade Eight, Step A, at 1182 per hour effective July 1st, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under the Commissioner's Office, consider rescinding the hire of Lauren Van Nostdelm as a summer clerk. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval, excuse me, consider approving the hire of Christian Sasek as summer clerk, 725 an hour, effective June 20th, 2013.
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under CYS, consider approving the promotion of caseworker Janelle Harris to a caseworker supervisor as non-union supervisor, Pay Grade 16, Step B, at $42,451.50 annually, effective June 19th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the promotion of 911 dispatcher Michael Perry to Equipment Systems Analyst at non-union supervisor, Pay Grade 10, at $13.05 an hour, effective June 18th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the promotion of part-time 911 dispatcher...
Table. I'm not going to motion to table.
Yeah, we'll, we'll table this one because we don't have enough information.
Motion to table?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under FAT, consider ratifying the resignation of part-time bus driver Harry Rittenhour, effective May 18th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving, approving the hire of James Shoemaker as a part-time bus driver at the rate of 1140 an hour, effective June 17th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Human Resources, consider approval...
I make a motion that we table the item. The contract was not ratified.
All those in favor?
Meaning, they do not, they voted it down, is that correct?
Consider approving the volunteer internship.
There was no...
All those in favor? Aye. Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the volunteer internship of Penn State Fayette student Rebecca Johnson, effective June 24th, 2013.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under the Fayette County Behavioral Health Agency, consider ratifying the resignation of Joe A. Cooplow, clerk type S2, effective June 14th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratifying the resignation of Perdian Van Driver Eugene Barchetti, effective June 6th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Information Technology, consider approving a motion to reject all proposals for FRP 13-07 Computer Needs Assessment.
Move the table. This was going to be reviewed by Kevin. Oh, we're rejecting this, is correct?
Yes.
Reject. I make the motion to reject. I'm sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item 12, Office of Human and Community Services. Consider awarding RFQ 13-01 to the following: Brownsville Republic Fixed Route to Brownsville Bus Lines for $48 for fiscal year 13, 14, and 50 for fiscal years 14 and 15. Brownsville, I'll just read them all. Brownsville Express Fixed Route to Brownsville Bus Lines, $48 for fiscal year 13, 14, and 50 for fiscal year 14, 15. Mason Town Fair Chance Fixed Route to Central Cab Company at $51.75 for fiscal year 13, 14, and $53.15 for fiscal year 14, 15. Wharton Township Henry Clay and Stewart Townships Shared Ride Services to Mountain Citizens Action Group for fiscal year 13, 14, and 14, 15, at shared rides, shared ride fair structure reimbursement rates.
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider awarding bid 1308 as listed.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
As best as 129, 133, 149, and 160.
Awarding the bid for what?
To sell.
This is to sell?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving third-party sponsorship agreements for fiscal year 13, 14 with the Fayette County Blind Association, Justine Ridge Counseling, Southwest, Southwestern Pennsylvania Area Agency on Edging, and St. Teresa Church Union Town Hospital and ARC.
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving contract with Fayette County Community Action Agency for administration of food bank program for fiscal year 13 and 14.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of advertising agreements for fiscal year 13 and 14. Second. The, as, as, as listed.
Step. Move.
Vince, move by second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the following service agreements for fiscal year 13 and 14 as listed.
Motion, motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13, under Public Works, consider awarding bid 13-10 for grass cutting to the following locations as listed.
It's grass cutting, trash removal, inspections. I don't want everyone to think that it's, it's a mountain for grass cutting. Second.
Yes, the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under, 14 under tax claim, consider removal of parcel number 12-03-0217 in Fayette City Borough from the repository bid list because it was incorrectly placed in the repository list, and consider approval to reject the bid of Francis M. Suri for $526 for the parcel.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item under the Commissioners, under Board Appointments, consider approving, did we interview all the board appointments?
We had the interviews for the WIB. Yes. Okay. I make a motion that we...
We interviewed two individuals for WIB. There were the WIB Board, Westmoreland Fayette Actual Board sent in a letter and had three other names that those individuals had called in to interview that.
I make a motion that we appoint George Franks to the Workforce Investment Board for a three-year term to expire 31 December 2015 in the business, business category.
It's not a three-year term, it's to complete the...
The balance of the term, so it is.
So, the term, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I also make a motion, and I'm going to pronounce his name, I apologize incorrectly, Joe Petville, Pet...
Um, Petola.
Petola, thank you. I knew I was going to pronounce it wrong. Joe Petola, to the balance of the business, of the, the business appointment, Workforce Investment Board for a three-year term to expire for, for the balance of the term. Let me rephrase.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under the, the next board appointment is for the Fayette County Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term to expire 2018. I'd like to table that because I don't think we had a chance to interview people yet, so... Do I have a second on the...
I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratification of the following transfers as listed for a total debit of $21,548 in credits, the same.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of the May 23rd, 2013 Regular Commissioner Meeting Minutes.
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Second.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider authorizing a termination of lease letter to landlord for Magister District 12-2-01 and 14-304, effective December 31st, 2013.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider rescinding the Commissioners' meeting minutes of March 19th, 2013. Oh, that's right. Motion to, to take no action on the next two items.
Well, there, it's only a general...
I'll make a motion to, I mean, to reject the, the motion of rescinding the minutes of March 2013.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I mean, there's no, we don't need to correct anything. There's nothing to correct. Do we need anything to correct, Mr. Berkeley? I didn't see anything to correct. My motion was very clear.
I thought there was the issue of something that was added to the minutes.
There was...
It was in the minutes that should not.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. Okay. That's correct. My motion at the March meeting did not reflect, so we need to amend that.
Right, we do.
My motion at the March meeting, in March, I had made a motion that we allocate a percentage of dollars to soup the townships. There were some other organizations as there, as well. That motion did not reflect any requirement for a match or anything of that nature. Somehow, that, that, that language on that had changed, but my motion did not reflect any, any specific requirements to that effect. So, that motion, what was the, do you have the lang... So that motion, what was the, do you have the language of the motion that I had made? It was just to award the specific percentages, so we could go with that again, so we know exactly what, I had allocated 10% to the townships, 4% to the fire departments, 1% to the Conneville Chamber, as well as 2% to the Conneville Chamber and the Fayette Chamber, and then I did community action. I don't know, let me find out. Yeah, yeah, don't hold me behind here, give me a copy of it.
There you go. We got to thank you.
Okay. 10% for townships, 4% for fire departments, 4% for the airport authority, 2% for the Fayette Chamber, countywide, 1% for the Conneville Chamber, the city of Conneville specifically, 3% for the Fayette County Redevelopment Authority, and 1% to Fayette County Community Action for a total of 25%. That's the way my motion was made, and obviously, we need to allow the minutes of March 2013 to reflect said motion.
So I think you need to.
Correct the minutes.
You need to correct the minutes, but you needed to pass the motion, consider rescinding the Commissioner meeting minutes of March 19th, 2013, and then consider, the next motion would be considered accepted.
Well, then.
Correct the minutes.
Okay, so, why don't you guys kind of jump, don't jump in before we make a motion? I mean, silence is golden, so you break the rule.
Amy was looking at me like.
Well, looking doesn't exactly get us to the point. So if we can, what action do we need to take?
We have to rescind.
The rescension.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we rescind the previous motion, that rescinded the motion of the March 20, March 19th, 2013 Commissioner minutes, and that we make a motion to accept that motion and rescind the minutes, and then subsequently move on to the next motion.
Okay, what's your question?
Letting just confuse the hell out of everybody.
That's the resolution that was passed.
Let me see it again.
That's why we're correcting the minutes because I was not understanding correcting the minutes and correcting the resolution. No.
No, we need.
Right, that's why I wanted to place it on the agenda.
Was it listed or was that motion accepted?
To rescind the previous motion, and then.
And then go back to.
Yes.
To rescind the.
Yes, so I'm making a motion to rescind the previous vote, previous motion and vote.
Right. Okay, second, all those in favor.
Now I'll make a motion that we rescind the Commissioner meeting minutes of March 19th, 2013.
Second, all those in favor.
Now I'm going to make a motion that we correct the record of the minutes of March 19th, 2013 to reflect, a motion was made by Commissioners Abatowsky, seconded by Commissioner Brazini to grant the approval of the resolution utilizing 2013 Act 13 money in the following manner: 10% for the townships, 4% for county volunteer fire departments, 4% for Fayette County Airport Authority, 2% to Fayette County Chamber, that's a countywide organization, 1% for the Conneville Area Chamber of Commerce, 3% for Fayette County Redevelopment Authority, and 1% for the Fayette County Community Action, a total of 25%. This is for 2013 Act 1390. That was my motion to disperse those funds. If we're going to discuss anything else regarding those funds, that's going to have to be made, I mean, obviously, discussed another time, but that was my motion on that day.
The motion before that's on the agenda says, "Consider accepting corrected Commissioner meeting minutes for March 19th."
And I'm giving the motion that I made that day, which was a ver.
That's not correcting the minutes. What needs to be done is, there's a resolution, that needs to be corrected, just to erase, eliminate that requiring application for specific project and matching funds.
That's the only thing that needs to be.
I didn't read, I didn't read.
I didn't read that.
He didn't read that. This is what he read in the minutes, the, as the, it was incorrectly, it was, there was another part added to it during the transcription, and that was, that was really the error, not the reading of it, not the actual motion.
The only thing that needs to be done is to correct, except, correct the Commissioner meeting minutes for March 19th, 2013 to reflect, deleting any notation regarding.
Specific matching funds and application process.
Period, and leave the rest of.
I read my motion the way I wanted it to be reflected.
But the motion is on the agenda.
No, I wish, I was basically omitting that, those two provisions out of there. Please continue, I apologize.
I believe what he did, unless you're seeing something different than I am.
We have, we have like.
He corrected it in accordance with what he actually said at the March 19th, 2013 meeting.
Yeah, that's all he did.
I'm not following.
I'll make a, also in that motion, if we're still on the floor, we vote on it now. Okay, that we omit requires application for specific project and matching funds from that resolution, correct, Commissioner?
I think, it's a matter of minutes and resolution. There's two separate issues. You're doing the minutes, and the Commissioner generally say the resolution needs to be changed as well. What you're doing the minutes doesn't change.
How many pages are your minutes? Thirty-some pages.
So we need to.
The only thing you're correcting out of 30 pages worth of minutes, and this is the agenda item, is to delete any notation from the minutes of March 19th, 2013 regarding application for specific projects. That, in itself, allows the chief clerk to go through and delete five words, requires application for specific project and matching funds, or six words, and now, in that, that's all that needs to be done, because we are, what's before us is correcting the minutes of the March 19th. That's it.
I think that's what he bumped down.
But you're, yeah, you're, we still have to, it's not on the agenda, but you're still going to have to address the resolution that was passed and signed, that's going to have to be.
The resolution never had.
No, 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 we're going to have to.
Well, yes, it did.
We're going to have to delete, we're going to have to go back in.
And that's what I wanted to do, you guys.
So we have a motion on the floor to make the change of the resolution.
Of the meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes. Then we're going to go back and we're going to reflect the resolution, eliminate the resolution.
Fix the resolution.
Yeah.
I'd like to know why that happened.
Who inserted the language after your resolution? Who did that?
It was inadvertently put on a hard copy.
By whom?
That couldn't be inadvertent, somebody had to write that.
Well, it could have been.
It was probably an older draft copy.
It could have been the possibility that they looked at grant applications and they inserted it based on traditional requirements and. Again, I'm here to correct it because, Mr. Vannick, it was my motion, I made the motion, my motion, I want to reflect accurately in the record. It is, it is going to reflect accurately on the record. There could have been what ifs and what happened and all that. The fact remains, it could have been the chief clerk looked at grant applications and just assumed there were matching application requirements. I don't know. The bottom line is, my intent on that day was to disperse 25% in accordance to my motion, that's what I want to correct and move on.
Don't you feel angry and upset that that was put into that language? Because obviously, you've upset a lot of people.
Mr. Chris, anger and upset is an emotion that is counterproductive to getting anything good done. If I was angry and upset every time I walked into a Commissioner's affiliated venue, whether it be a meeting or something, nothing would get done. I want to move anger and upset away from it and talk about good things and getting the solution solved. And that's part of this right now is to solve a problem, not to get angry and upset and point the finger and blame somebody for it.
I think though it's not anger and upset.
That's called passing the buck.
This is not, this is not a debate. This is a business meeting, we will conduct it as such. I will second the Commissioners' meaning to correct the, the motion to correct the meeting minutes of March 19th, 2013. All those in favor, motion carries.
Well, I think you do need to.
To change the resolution, you need to change the resolution.
To delete those.
And it's.
I didn't count them.
What resolution number is it, A? I also want to amend.
That's what I brought up at the last Tuesday's meeting to place on the agenda so you could address those issues.
I also want to amend Resolution 13. We have to amend the agenda to do that, and I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for the purpose of amending Resolution 13-03-19-40. That amendment reflected monies that were to be dispersed of Act 13 revenue for 2013. That's my, I make a motion to amend the agenda to amend Resolution 130319-40.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye, public comment.
Is there any public comment on this particular motion?
Commissioners, I'm AJ Bonham, one of the county supervisors.
Mr. Bonham, please try to keep your comments.
Very sure.
Bless you.
Thank you very much for righting the wrong and correcting the wording. Thank you, Commissioner.
There's a motion to amend the resolution, amend the agenda to amend the resolution.
I second it, all those in favor, we did that so we could go ahead and amend, make the motion to amend the resolution.
I make a motion to amend Resolution 130319-40 to admit in the resolution the following, to delete, omit, delete, requires application for specific project and matching funds. So like C. Spencer.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
I made the motion.
No one seconded it.
I'll second it. Okay, are there any public announcements or public comments? Yes, sir.
Jack Lawver of Brownsville Borough, and I applaud you, county supervisor, to come out and, you know, on this issue, but I would like to ask the Commissioners in the future that all municipalities of Fayette County be considered to distribute these monies, because we do have adverse effects in our municipalities also, and so any future allocations, I'm requesting that all of us be considered in that request. And just to add to something that happened at the beginning of the meeting on the prison issues, you think what's happening to our society, we're spending more money to house and educate prisoners than we are to educate our youth of the state, and that's, that's why our society is going the way it is, I feel, thank you.
Any objection? I'd like to add to the record letters of support regarding item number seven, which was the, in regard to the possibility of construction of a new facility. I won't read them, but I have letters from Judge Wagner, Sheriff Brownfield, Register Willis-Warman, Recorder V. Malosky. I'd like that these be entered in as a part of the record. Any objection, if anybody's an objection to that?
Without objection. Yes, sir.
Mr. Ward.
Mayor Ward.
Thank you, Commissioners, Lester Ward, Mayor Brownsville. You've already gone over the 2013 Act for, 2013, for year 2013, Act 13. I was most disappointed in not taking in the money for many other units or activities, with the fact that you mentioned the townships, but you did not mention the boroughs. We also are part of Fayette County, and we should at least come in for a one percent, or some consideration, because I know in Brownsville Borough, we have trucks running over our, over our streets and roads, we don't have any, any, any gas towers, but that being the case, and I use my own money to correct one back in one of our fields right there, but as Jack stated, in the future, when you consider townships, please consider us all, because we are a part of the Fayette County also. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Ward. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Kellinger, I'm on the prison committee, the architectural team leader. Our responsibility is site location and architectural design. I've heard the comments in here today, and many of them are incorrect. But since our first meeting of the group on November the 8th, the four teams comprised of approximately 24 volunteers have continued to seek information on how this project can come to a final resolution. Due to that end, many hours have been devoted to ensure site location, architectural design, funding, programs, judicial, and inmate needs are met. In order to ensure our work is on the right track, other counties that have built new jails have been contacted and asked what they have done and what needs should be added or corrected so we can benefit from their knowledge and experience. Been in contact with Pennsylvania Department of Corrections, their Office of County Inspections, and they provided professional insight on our current facility, which does not meet current health, safety, and welfare standards of inmates and staff. In addition, numerous other people have been contacted and interviewed for information, all of which does not violate the consolidated statutes of the Sunshine Act. When our group finalizes the location, the design, funding, and programs, it will be presented to the prison board for their review, addressed to the public for public hearings, and finally, the approval of the Board of Commissioners. So included in this process, requests for proposals and/or bids will be necessary for the project. Our prison group chairperson has kept abreast of our work as a matter of routine, and we're looking forward to a final decision that all Fayette County will be proud of. Information that will jeopardize a third party or their interest will remain in-house in the committee until a final decision is made, and I want to emphasize, there's been no final decisions made on anything. There are not two sites that we're looking at, as of yesterday, there are 15. But the people of Fayette County cannot afford to miss this opportunity for the building of a new county jail, having all points considered and correct decisions made. There is a lot of information that we're gathering, and the information needs to be collected, so we do this project right if it is approved. So keep in mind what you hear on the street from other people, just take it lightly. As I said, as the architectural team leader, I have the information that's corrected and we've collected, and as I said, a lot of it today is just speculation, and when the time is right and everything is done, you will hear exactly where we're at. And as I said before, if you have any other questions, I'm available and answering for you. Thank you, Commissioners.
One question, if I might, Mr. Kellinger. Have you looked into the plan that I think Commissioner Zimmerling had a Nashville representative do about a year and a half ago, on, does our prison currently meet the standards necessary, and whether or not renovations could be made? I thought that was another option, or should be an option in all of this.
I don't know thoroughly what it was regarding.
She spent a day or two.
I mean, I'm talking about their jurisdiction integrity, I don't think that they got any, I don't know how thorough or detailed that was, I don't think it really got into.
We weren't panning on building.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think it talked about.
No, but I'm saying there should be options other than building, that's my point, and according to the report that came out about a year and a half, two years ago, done by Angela, what was the name of the group that did the study, a woman? It was the Federal Prison something or the other?
It's an independent body, I know that, I don't know the name of the commission.
I believe it was the National Institute of, yeah, National Institute of Corrections.
The National Institute of Corrections came in. And the National Institute of Corrections came in and took some time to go through the prisons, to take a good look at it, to say what they thought about it. That was never really publicized that much. But it was an option, and I would like to see that option still there.
And there was a lot of policy review of our policies, procedures, manual, that sort of thing.
And that's all a part of it, it's the running of a prison, it's not just a building, okay? And, and this person looked at that in some detail, and certainly at that level should have some say, or should at least that report should have some part in the considerations that you're making.
Ms. Savannick, that, uh, report is part of the process, it will be considered-
By who?
By, by the prison working group.
No, 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 by the public. All I'm saying to you is, you have set your mind on building a new prison, that's clear. I'm saying add the other options to it so that people can make a true choice. Not just a one choice, it's like, you know, on, you can vote yes or no. That's not good enough. What you need are several options. We can renovate this, we can buy that, we could build a new prison, whatever those options are. And you should have some plans on that, and what it would cost to do each of those options. What, what I see right now is, you've made up your mind and we're going for it, that's it.
Well, let me point out a couple things that you may say, Ms. Savannick. First of all, the report that was done by this NIC representative was purely an operational assessment. It had nothing to do with-
I still think we need to put it out there for people to look at.
If you may finish that, it didn't have anything to do with the specific building renovation, please continue, Commissioner.
The second, the second-
Please put it out there, I don't care, I mean, you don't have to defend it, just put it out there for people to look at and see what would be needed to accomplish just what they said. I don't know why you're so afraid to put the information out.
Maybe, who knows, who knows, let's give it a shot.
Put it out there.
Ms. Savannick, first of all, that is one small part of the wealth of information-
I know that.
-that we've been accumulating for, for eight months now.
I know that.
And, uh, and that, that focused on, uh, you know, a very narrow perspective. So, that, you know-
Maybe that's what we need, a narrow perspective. I'm saying you're making decisions for all of us, not just the other things.
One of the other things I want to point out too, and, and it goes back to my original comments. If we put people, we're doing that now, my God, we're paying, we're paying a premium, uh, uh, running inmates out, outside agencies. And, and I will tell you this, that's warehousing. We're not, when we send people outside-
That's the terminology that you choose to use, I, 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 I mean, I don't want to go there, just, just take my dog and consider it.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Under the current resolution that was passed, uh, how much money will be expended on the testing? Is there a limit?
No, it's open.
We don't, I don't think we, there's an answer to that question because we haven't taken that step yet.
I mean, do you have any idea though, how much you're set aside to-
I mean, I'm awaiting, I'm awaiting information from the prison group.
Are you, are you referring to what the, which resolution?
The resolution, the item seven.
Oh, item seven.
Yeah, the, the, what, have you, is there, is there any specific, you know, you reached, you're doing your study and it doesn't look like it's, you know-
No, we're, we're not, no. We're, we're past, we're past the study point, let me make this clear, we're past the study point. We've made, there's been countless studies that are collecting dust on shelves. We're in a process of actually, uh, progressing with what we need to do for this county. Again, let me, let me be clear. This account creation, to accumulate any, any money that we will spend in preparatory work, is purely a holding place to roll it into a bond issue later on. So, so whatever money we spend will become part of the bond issue, and then we'll be reimbursed to whatever accounts we get into.
Well, the thirty million dollars in projections, does that include, uh, interest off over the terms of the loan, over the thirty years? Is that, is that everything, or what would be the cost of the facility?
Well, the cost, the cost of the facility-
Over the thirty-year period?
Well, I'd have to, I'd have, that's our, the, the thirty million dollars is the cost of, uh, construction. Uh, the bond issue will, once we, we don't know what the, until we acquire a bond issue, we won't know what the interest will be over the, the life of the bond.
So, then over, over the thirty years, you have no clue what the prison's going to cost?
No, we have no idea.
No.
You have a fixed amortization schedule. If we borrow thirty million dollars in today's money, all things being equal, at a rate of three point six five percent, that will be in-
Is that the lending rate?
That's what it is as of today, but that changes according to economic conditions. That payment will be two million, three hundred thousand a year, and it will encompass all of our debt service. Of course, it's a lot of money.
It's a ton of money.
Take two point three million times thirty would be sixty million and some odd dollars.
There you go, that's how you do everything. That's, that's the whole story, it's not a cost, you have sixty million to borrow thirty million, and then there's the other one.
That's actually not how it works because you have the time value of money. Thirty million dollars borrowed today, by far, at three six, three point six five percent interest, will be worth less money than sixty million in thirty years.
I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about paying the payment of two million and something or other every year, where's it coming from?
Well, first of all, we're paying, this year alone, how much will we be paying Green County this year, Mr. Dolly?
Well, I want to address one thing.
Well, half of that, for sure.
Come on, Vince, let's be real about this.
Now, let's be real about it.
We have it.
Let's, let's really be real, Mr. Dolly, what will be the payment to Green County this year?
Seventy thousand, a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, I don't know.
Right, you don't, so will you let me tell you?
That's, that's, that's the point, we're trying to provide, the payments to Green County are going to be nearly fifty percent of the cost of, of a wages-
Right now, Dr. Savannick, as of today, we have spent five hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars in out-of-county rentals. That comprises Cambria. If we do nothing, it will be worse than that because they will close our prison and ship all of our inmates out.
Is somebody coming around to fix that thing? I mean, we got, there, it, if current statistics continue-
You are not listening to me, I am worried about how we're going to pay for this over the next thirty years. We have a budget of twenty-nine million. You are going to spend at least sixty to ninety million. And, and you now say, oh, but look, we're sending out a million a year. Well, you're going to put two million into that rather than a million, okay? And, and even though you have-
I don't understand that premise.
Well, yeah, oh, let me put it, get this way. Right now, you're saying you might spend a million dollars a year to ship these people out. To build this new prison, you're going to pay over two million dollars a year. So, you tell me how this is going to help this county, it's not.
Let me tell you how it's going to help the county. The prison expenditures for two thousand and twelve were six million, four thousand dollars. Of that, six hun- or not of that, in addition, six hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars went to outsourcing.
But I'm still, that doesn't have, you're still going to have operating costs if you have a brand-new prison.
But when you create efficiencies through a new system, costs decrease.
You're not going to make that many efficiencies, I've seen the efficiencies. They go to brand-new facilities out there, they put in all, it was air-conditioned, the building, I went in there, you couldn't breathe in there. So, then they had to put in an air conditioning system.
Where, where's, where, where are you?
Where are you referencing?
What I'm referring to is, I've seen this all before, more than once, and it isn't just here, it's-
Did you, did you, did you work in a prison?
I said, I have seen this process.
Well, now, I'll ask you a question.
Well, yeah, if you want to call Penn State a prison.
Oh.
Okay? And think about it, I've watched the biggest planners in the world make these plans and watch them just collapse everywhere. They built the second building, they dug into the ground, they did find that there was pyrite. Did they pay any attention to it? No, they dug a great big hole, and they had to remove all the coal, then fill the hole, and then build the building on top of that.
And that's why we're doing core sampling, so that we don't fall into those thick walls.
And I don't even want to build that. If there are buildings that we could use, let's use them.
As a former contractor, I can assure you that our prison is not-
I don't trust contractors, don't talk to me. And you and other contractor, I don't believe anything you guys tell me. You tell me, oh, it'll cost you a thousand, next thing I know, I'm paying two thousand. No, I, I, you don't give the whole full figure, you put a figure out there that is attractive to the person. And then, as you find the real variabilities, as you go on, you just keep adding on, oh, hey, that sewer that you put in, you, you've got to pay five thousand instead of two thousand, five hundred because we ran into whatever.
Evelyn, maybe, that's the reason we're going through this process.
It's not going to stop it, it's going to happen, it's inevitable.
I, I disagree.
I know you're disagreeing.
I, I disagree because project management-
You're allowed to disagree.
...are, you know, you know, the fact of the matter is, they're, they're just, they're just like fiscal laws.
I don't want to fight with you anymore about this.
If you avoid the fiscal laws, it's, the, the results are going to be-
No, they're not, because you can never, ever, ever see all the variables as a human being. I don't care what plans you draw, you cannot see all the variables. You look at your own life, and you will see that those variables change, and things change. So, whenever I do this, I know I have to build in the extra sum to take care of whatever because I'm never going to get the real cost at the beginning. That's it.
Thank you for your expertise.
It's, I, I have a lifetime of it.
I have a question, um, maybe Mr. Kellinger can answer this. You said there were fifteen as of today's site selections, uh, potential sites?
That's correct.
Is one of the alternatives actually looking into renovating what we have? Is there, is that as an alternative to being considered?
Yes, that's one.
So, that's one of the fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or, or any other comments? Yes, sir.
Ms. Anderson, I asked you at the beginning of this meeting, and now that you've voted upon spending this money, where these locations were at these sites? And you didn't want to answer me, and you told me that question would be answered later, and you didn't want to ask for Mr. Kavanaugh. Now, I'm going to ask you again since now you've voted to spend the money. Tell us where the primary sites are at.
First of all, we're not, we're not voting to spend any money on-
Core samplings, tell me where you're going to do the core samplings.
We don't have yet.
It, let's eliminate, he eliminated one, let's eliminate another. The Connelsville Airport, are we looking at the Connelsville Airport for a prison? Yes or no? Mr. Kellinger?
We're looking for-
Is the Connelsville Airport a projected site?
The area around the airport is.
The airport, not around the airport, the airport property, is off the table?
We can't, we can't decide anything on the airport because the FAA is involved. As I said, there's third-party interest involved in these things, and you can't answer these questions.
That's my point.
You've got third-party interest here and legal issues, so I can't come out and stand up in this room and tell you where all these fifteen sites are. Dunmore Township, North Union, there's sites in those locations, there's sites in Franklin Township. I can't tell you where they're at or who owns them at this point because we're still gathering information, I don't know how to make any clearer.
Well, you made it a little bit clearer, you just picked three townships up, you did make a little bit clearer.
Drona Township.
Okay, there's four now.
D'Arden Township.
There's five, there's five different areas.
And I can go on, but I can't pinpoint the locations, I have that information.
Okay.
And I can't release it because of the legal ramifications of the property owners and the sellers.
But to clarify, the Connelsville Airport is not on your target for that prison.
That vicinity is.
Okay, not the airport?
The vicinity is.
Okay, vicinity. And Mr. Anderson, one other thing, you made mention about rehabilitating prisoners. I think that's a noble thought, but I think you're so far off base with that. You know, we all grow up, and we all had, most of us had mothers and fathers who instilled values in us. Those who didn't, I feel sorry for, but we all went through an educational system and a school system who taught us right or wrong. We all make choices as adults to go down the right path or the wrong path. Some choose the wrong path, and those are the ones that are sitting over in that building right now in that jail. For you to think you're going to rehabilitate those people and get them out the door with a change of attitude, you're in some dreamland, you're in a bizarre world, it's never going to happen. There are dyed-in-the-wool criminals, the penal system we have now in place has workshops, woodshops, metal shops, put them guys through it, and most of them come out to turn out to be losers again. That's the unfortunate fact of a criminal. We all have a choice. Our school system is to where these people's lives need to be changed with teachers. B, we have alcohol, drug, uh, family spousal abuse, we have all these programs in place in Fayette County. Why do you want to duplicate these services in a jailhouse? There's lots of places for people with problems to go to get their lives sorted out and correct, both publicly and privately for those who can't afford it. For you to think you're going to change all this with a new prison, I think you're in dreamland. And that's my story, you're spending fifty million bucks of my money, and I work hard for my money, and I paid my whole ticket, and I've had my whole life. There's certain things in this county that need to be done. I'd rather you guys pick fifty, one million-dollar projects to try and help enhance our community and take a roll of the dice on fifty items when we all damn well know a prison is going to bring nothing back to this county. It enhances nothing, it brings us no pride, it does nothing to help any average law-abiding citizen to us to spend the fifty million bucks, it's crazy. Especially when SGI Greensburg can be had for free, literally for free, for the taking with your people. You could go there and get it and start busting there tomorrow. You have all your employees up in Greensburg still, you'd be cutting nobody out of the program, everybody'd be in the loop, you'd make money. And Mr. Kellinger says they're getting rid of that prison because it's dilapidated and we're out. Well, you said it, I appreciate that, you're not certain of that.
Misquoting, I never said that.
That was Sheriff Brownfield, everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheriff, I, I don't know if that's true or not either because I don't know all the specs. Nevertheless, the building was turnkey as of last week, turnkey literally, intact with everything. Why not lease, buy, own, or get for free that facility? You've got nothing to lose, you've got an eighty-acre parcel, you disturb nothing, you take nothing off the tax roll. With the eighty acres, do we have mineral rights up there with the eighty acres? Can you expand on that property? Certainly you can't, there's every opportunity in the world for that place to be reused to all of our benefits. Commissioners, we didn't hire, I'm sorry, we didn't elect you three to be kings of the kingdom. We don't need kings, we need representatives who think of us, who paid a ticket down here. And I think that's being neglected far too often down here.
That's, that's my concern, is that we don't neglect the problems and again, ignore them and just pass them on to some other Board of Commissioners, that's the easy way out. Let me finish, please, let me finish, before I make the decision, before- First of all, no, 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 I, I've been, Mr., I, you had your chance.
The one located Greensburg is irresponsible.
Mr. Chris, first of all, first of all, the Greensburg facility is just that, it's in Greensburg, that's more than counting. So, we don't know all the particulars there, whether we're allowed, whether or not the, the courts would approve it. And we have to have courts approval to have, uh, transportation, police, there's a lot more that goes into this.
Timmy, Debbie, Richie, Joey, Johnny, Lucy, the rest of the- Don't make it happen.
But my point is just this, is that I don't want to ignore the problems. Because if you ignore them, you're passing them on to somebody else, don't you agree? When, when, when you want your child educated, you take the steps, when you want your car washed, you take the steps. If you don't, it gets dirty, and somebody, somebody else is going to do, the problems are going to be more severe.
But you're right, we take the steps, we do.
And I, well, and we, but we have, as leaders, we have to at least take the initiatives that are going to allow people to voice opinion, make determinations on what is the most effective way of handling the situation. And this prison group is, again, I'm not a part of it, I've not taken a role in it. They're doing a very good job in making determinations that's going to allow these three individuals sitting at the, at this table to make decisions, hopefully the, uh, prison board, the ability to make informed decisions. That's a part of the process, but I'm not going to ignore a problem. It'd be easy for me to say, you know what, to heck with this, let somebody else make this very difficult decision two years from now or three years from now, or ten years from now. When the problem is more severe, it costs triple, uh, that would be the easy decision for me to make. But it's not the right decision for me to make. The right decision for me to make is to take this, analyze it for what it's worth, based on what the county, how the county will reflect with the new facility today or with not a new facility today. What's the ramifications to the taxpayers five year, five, five years from today? Five years from there, there might be three, three new board members sitting here. Ms. Savannick may show up at a meeting and say, what are you guys going to do about the prison? It's costing me a million, two hundred thousand in out-of-county rentals.
Well, it's better than two.
Oh, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, but the bottom line is, we cannot ignore problems. We have to at least study them, analyze them for what they're worth, and then make decisions.
Commissioner, I would reiterate your theory more, but one thing you have, and I want you personally, how come these alternatives were not thought about by all these people?
We've, Mr. Chris, we-
You had one, Evelyn said it, build new.
We, we've looked, Mr., I've, I've explored the four twenty-ninth personally.
You have, but we have-
Mrs. May, then I'll call you with every, everything, I'll go through you, okay? And then we'll, we'll work through your phone.
Put out a referendum to see how many people in this county want to vote for your fifty million dollar prison, I'll guarantee you get-
Probably right. But tell me-
And, and Sheriff, nobody wants to cheat you on anything, we want you to do your job. This isn't about you, it's about us spending all our money.
You've been here for how many years?
Fourteen and a half.
When, when you got here, did they talk about the need of a new prison?
This started from day one, they did a study in two thousand and one, they spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Hold on, let's use it.
May I finish, please?
Sure.
They spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty so, at that time, sixteen million dollars. Here we are ten years later, now it's forty million dollars.
Something needs to be done.
Yeah.
Everybody can agree.
I don't care where. Greene County's filled up, Orson County's filled up, Cambria County's filled up. I'm thinking the prison is the Bieber bucket now.
Hey, listen, on what you just said there, my idea with the SSI Greensburg, there's 850 beds. If you only need 400 for Fayette County, you can rent 400 beds a day for what you just told me. 400 and 100 a day, you're making a hell of a lot of money. You can be the new hotel in the penal system. Why not go for it? It's self-sufficient, we help ourselves, and we solve a problem with our own inmates.
Actually, actually, Mr. Chris, Westmoreland County charges us seventy-eight dollars a day per inmate, where Greene County charges us 55. So that's not an economically viable option.
And that's not what he's saying.
That's not what I said. We can get their money. If the sheriff just said all these counties are overcrowded, we'll take them all at Greensburg. You've got 400 extra beds to fill. Now you start making money to have this prison self-sustainable. Now you want to go with your idea by rehabilitating convicts? Do it up there.
And Mr. Chris, you have knowledge of what it would cost to buy that facility and then to renovate it up there?
Hold it, hold it. I do have the knowledge of what it'd cost to buy that facility. To renovate it, no. And who says it needs renovated? It was turnkey a week ago for X amount of prisoners. It didn't need renovated. It's turnkey. Turnkey. You want to assess that, Commissioner? It's assessed at three million. What's Westmoreland County's ratio on assessment? It's...and maybe your solicitor, Mr. Barkley, will know. I think it's four times assessed value on a piece of property. So the Westmoreland, the Greensburg SCI is assessed at three million dollars. Times it by four, their ratio, you've got a 12 billion dollar building sitting there. If you had to pay...I'm telling you, it's right, I just looked on a computer yesterday. It's their assessment and the ratio. If you had to literally pay the 12 million dollars to Westmoreland County or the state for the assessed value, you're still getting a better deal than blowing 50, 80, 90 million and playing games for two years to get that far.